So hopefully you had a chance to get this book ahead of time and read the introduction in chapter one. But if you didn't, it's okay because I think we still participate in our discussions. So, okay, first of all, what is substitutionary atonement? So I believe that on page 22 of our book, there's a short, yeah, there's a, there's kind of a summary of this theory's definition of sin and salvation. Would you like to read those out loud for us? Just the definition of sin and definition of salvation.
Jesus died in our place, repaying our debt, so that we don't have to. And the definition of sin, sin is a violation of God's intended order for creation and violates the very nature of God. We owe an infinite debt for this violation and therefore deserve punishment for our sin.
Thank you. You know what occurred to me, occurred to me as you were reading that probably it would be nice if we introduced ourselves. So I'm Vicki Rockhold.
I'm Stan Jacobson.
Nancy Jacobson.
Andrea Fry.
Jean Anderson.
Well, she's good.
John Highters.
And Tom McCullough.
And Matt Paul.
This is Pam. Pam, you know, you know everybody around here?
This is Jean.
Hi Jean.
Hi Sam. Okay, except for Jean.
Okay.
Okay, so. And also to back up a little bit, so this book takes us through six different ideas or theories of what was going on for Jesus's death on the cross and resurrection and how various people kind of interpret that or believe about that. And our purpose here is not to convince anyone, I don't believe, of any particular belief. It's just to explore these different ideas and ways of thinking about it.
Yeah, and I would add too, I think he's already talked about in the book, that, you know, our faith, kind of an understanding, kind of goes, dabbles into these different areas. They all have, they all have strengths and they all have limitations. And so I don't personally, you know, have embraced any one in particular over, over anything else. I mean, and if you, I think what'll be interesting is like some of the songs that we sing. Now that you've, you're starting into the book, are you seeing some of that, like in the, you know, the music we're singing? It's also, you know, just kind of pay attention, you'll see different elements of, of these different understandings of atonement, so, yeah.
Okay, so in this chapter, we're presented with the first way of understanding, or a way of understanding Jesus's death on the cross, substitutionary atonement. This theory is built on the idea that actions have consequences and wrongful actions deserve punishment. The author writes, "It is the idea that if there is to be order and decency in the world, then the guilty must be punished in order for wrongs to be righted. Those are the rules, and changing them will cause nothing but chaos and amity." How do you respond to this point of the world? Do you agree or disagree? And in what ways does this view shape the world we live in?
Does it shape the world we live in?
You love that.
The world looks pretty dark to me at this point. The war in Europe is, or my living, so much. It's hard for me to see Christ at work in the world.
That's the one, the crisis, right?
There, there.
But there is a certain order in life. We go to sleep, we get up, we eat, you know, and we interact with people. So there is an order, and I think we're aware of what's good and what's bad.
Yeah, we think also about our laws and regulations, at least in the United States. Is there a sense that, that sin must be punished, right? The guilty must be punished in order for wrongs to be righted? Our society is based on that in the Lord's degree, it seems like. But maybe it doesn't always seem just, like that doesn't always happen in a way that's equal, fair, just. So back to the definition under this theory, the substitutionary atonement. Sin is a violation of God's intended order for creation, and sin violates the very nature of God. And therefore, we owe an infinite debt for this violation and deserve punishment for our sin. And then the definition of salvation, that Jesus died in our, in our place, repaying our debt, so that we don't have to. In the Old Testament, we see the central role that that sacrificial system, and blood atonement in particular, played in redeeming human sin. In Exodus, we remember the story of how the Israelites were held captive in Egypt under the oppression of Pharaoh, and how Pharaoh was finally convinced to let them go after God sent a plague to kill Egypt's firstborn. So let's take a look in the Bible at Exodus 11, 1 through 6. Just going back to the roots of this theory of substitutionary atonement. 11, 1 through 6. Anybody want to read that aloud for us?
The Lord. The Lord said to Moses, "I will bring one more plague upon Pharaoh and upon Egypt. Afterwards, he will let you go from here. Indeed, when he lets you go, he will drive you away. Tell the people that every man is to ask his neighbor and every woman is to ask her neighbor for objects of silver and gold." Am I reading the right thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Lord gave the people favor in the sight of Egypt. Moreover, Moses himself was a man of great importance in the land of Egypt, in the sight of Pharaoh's officials and the sight of the people. Moses said, "Thus says the Lord, about midnight I will go out through Egypt. Every firstborn in the land of Egypt shall die, from the firstborn of Pharaoh who sits on his throne, to the firstborn of the female slave who is behind the handmill, and all the firstborn of the livestock. Then there will be a loud cry throughout the whole land of Egypt, such as, such as has never been and ever will be again."
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have that kind of blood sacrifices of commitment for. And then Exodus 12, 21 to 23. Want to read that for us?
Then Moses called all the elders of Israel and said to them, "Go select lambs for your families and slaughter the Passover lamb. Take a bunch of hyssop, dip it in the blood that is in the basin, and touch the lintel and the two doorposts with the blood in the basin. None of you shall go outside, outside the door of your house until morning. For the Lord will pass through, pass through to strike down the Egyptians when he sees the blood on the lintel and on the two doorposts. The Lord will pass over that door and will not allow the destroyer to enter your houses or to strike you down."
Okay, so the Israelites had to do certain things in order to be spared. What had to die in order for them to be saved? A substitution, right? So that idea of substitutionary atonement, back there, back there in the Old Testament. By the time we get to the New Testament, the authors of the Gospels and the Thistles began to reflect on what the cross means for the world. And most of them did so through the lens of that ancient sacrificial practice. So now let's take a look at John 1, verse 29. We're having drills today. Find that spot. John 1, verse 29.
The next day, you saw Jesus coming forward and said, "Look, the Lamb of God who takes away the sin of the world."
Okay, so that recalls back to what happened with the ancient Israelites, that long, long history. Okay. So there are things that are what Jesus did, and then there's what we gained. And so let's take a look at that in the Bible, looking at 1 Peter 2, 24.
He himself bore our sins in his body on the cross, so that free from sins we might live for righteousness by his wounds, you have been healed.
Okay, so what God did and what we gained, right? God physically took on our sins, so it could be destroyed in his death, and what we gained is we are free from sin.
Going back to the John one. It is interesting to me, especially in comparison to Exodus and John. The blood on the lintels, the doorposts, were basically then for all who heard, among the Jews, basically, it was for the Jews. John, or John 1, 29. Behold, the Lamb of God who takes away the sin of the world. Quite a difference between Exodus and John. That's a big difference.
Yeah, it is, and there's another verse, the verse she mentions in here. Jesus did not come to condemn the world, but to save the world, and again, it's the world, you know? That his blood was shed for all, not just a specific few, not just the Jews. Thank goodness.
Yeah. Quite a difference.
And please do jump in anytime, anybody who has any thoughts about, about all this. I'm just going to let it be dry. Galatians 3, 13 to 14.
Christ redeemed us from the curse of the law by becoming a curse for us. For it is written, "Cursed is everyone who hangs on a tree," in order that, that in Christ Jesus, the blessing of Abraham, might come to the Gentiles, so that we might be receiving the promise of the Spirit through faith.
Can you think about that part? Did you hear that again? Because of your mask, I couldn't quite hear.
Okay, "Christ redeemed us from the curse of the law by becoming a curse for us. For it is written, 'Cursed is everyone who hangs on a tree,' in order that in Christ Jesus, the blessing of Abraham, might come to the Gentiles, so that we might receive the promise of the Spirit through faith." So it's like what you guys were saying, it's, you know, it's not just the Jews, it's everyone.
What's the hangs on a tree part?
Yeah. The cross, it's, that's the crucifixion.
I'm not sure the words, and Stan, you, you know what the?
I'm trying to look at the cross reference right now. Yeah, that's always a hard one. I haven't quite got it either.
Yeah, that's important to have context. That'd be nice to have context, because we, in this country, have often a different definition of hanging from a tree.
Yeah, right, lynching. Okay, well, while we're trying, we're looking that up.
Some of Paul's exegetical work went past muster at Princeton Seminary. Just saying.
You know, Deuteronomy says that, but I don't, I don't know the context of it. The cross reference for the Galatians, 1, Deuteronomy 21, 23, but
what's crucifixion?
That doesn't help me any. I don't know.
Crucifixion wasn't even going on, was it?
No, obviously not.
There is that notion of the shame of the cross, though, or of crucifixion, that somehow gets woven into this context, it seems like.
If you were hanging on a tree, you're guilty of something.
Well, I think the focus, the main point is Christ, who was blemished free, who was guilty of no sin, assumed the role of the sin, assumed the role of the curse, took on the most horrible yeah, persona of all of us, and, and paid that price, you know, still.
So Deuteronomy 21, is that where you're looking?
Yeah.
Yeah, 20, so I'm gonna read 22.
Yeah.
And 23. Oh, you found it too?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
When someone is convicted of a crime punishable by death and is executed, and you hang him on a tree. I just gotta say, reading this in light of what we're just talking about with lynching, that's almost kind of triggering here.
Again, it says, "His corpse must not remain all night upon the tree." And basically, if he does, if the corpse remains, you defy of the land, it says, the last verse, or last line. "You must not defy of the land that the Lord your God is giving you for possession." So somehow, I, I don't understand it, but.
Right, and for, for anyone hung on a tree is under God's curse.
Yeah.
So after they execute him, they hang him on a tree for all the world to see that this guy, you know, just like this guy was a bad, look now, you all can see we executed him, and I want you to see it, is that what it is?
Well, but not, but not to remain there, that they have to take, take the body down and bury it.
And yet the Romans used crucifixion, and they left them there for
Yeah.
everyone to see forever. I mean, I don't know at what point they took them.
I think that's, this is maybe one of, if this is mentioned as one of the drawbacks of this idea, is that it's, it's kind of glory, glory, offend some of our sensibilities. Okay, let's look at 2 Corinthians 5, 21. Thinking about what Jesus did and what we gained.
God made him who had no sin to be sin for us, so that in him we might become the righteousness of God.
Yeah, so what Jesus did and what we gained.
The word righteousness, someone explained it to me as right action, like thinking, right taking, this is the action. But Matt, how would you break down, for anybody, how would you break down righteousness, because that's a big word.
Yeah, I think I'd add to that, I guess, a sense of purity or something else. Stan, if you, you know, Stan's a retired pastor, so I think, I think you know that too.
Not so retired.
Semi-retired.
He teaches so good, well.
My, my version says, instead of using the word righteousness, it uses the phrase of grace with God.
Yeah. That one verse where the righteousness, we become the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. Let's see, we're the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. I remember being told to recite that again and again when we are thinking that we are not good enough to serve, not good enough to do the work of God, to remember that we're forgiven, and that it's actually God who is working through us. And so to claim that, that we are the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus. Let God work through us.
You know, I think it also pays to, to look at it, define it from the other direction, and that is, you know, the biblical references to Christ as being, being man, but without sin. In other words, righteousness is the absence of sin. And in, in the biblical context, any sin, at any point in one's life, all it takes is one. And by definition, we're born into sin. By definition, we, at some point in our lives, will at least sin a little, some of us more than others. And, and then, and there you go. Sin is part of your, your life history, sin is part of who you are, until washed clean by the grace of God through the blood of Christ. We can't avoid it.
This, this verse is one that I've been thinking about a fair amount recently. Just, you know, for our sake, he made him, he, God, made him, Jesus, to be sin. I mean, even that is compounding. Who knew no sin? So that, or for this reason he did it, that in Christ, then, we might become the righteousness of God. It it starts with being in a right relationship with God, in him, in Christ. But I think righteousness also carries, then, a picture of right relationships. It goes beyond, but it always starts with that right relationship with God, but it just can't end there. It goes beyond that.
It goes beyond the right relationship with God?
It goes to our right relationships with creation, with other people, and in, with Jesus, our enemies also.
Right, right. So acting rightly, acting.
Yeah. As I think about it, like, and not that I'm right, so.
Yeah.
I don't claim that.
That, that line, "God made Jesus to be sin,"
That's huge.
Can I share a story, a family story, a short family story? My sister, who lives in Bachel, in her church, they started, they did some podcasts about people telling their faith journey. And they wanted just to share those podcasts with the church because it can look so different. People who walk with Christ can look so different from person to person. And that it's all good, you know, that it's all good. But one piece in it, she mentioned about, we, we were from an alcoholic home, and we sisters beat each other up, you know, at home, we were angels out in the light, but, you know, how do you deal with this turmoil? We beat each other up, and, and she said that she was the biggest of the bullies or whatever. And, but when she, but when Christ transformed her life, she came and apologized to the sister right below her, closest to her age. And she apologized for what she had done. And somebody, and a guy who was interviewing says, "Did somebody tell you you needed to do that? You need to ask that for goodness sake?" He said, "No." She said, "No, I, I don't, I don't even remember doing it. I have no, no recollection of this. It's only the other sister that did it, and I have no recollection." But, so that same thing, when, when that transformation of the heart with God, that that just should flow out to others. So I'm just sharing that, because I just heard the story this last week, and I think this is up to my mind.
Yeah, thank you, Eve.
So is sin in our DNA?
I think so. I love, you know, some people say children are born innocent, right? And then they grow into, and, and if they die before the age of 12, oh, we didn't have any goodness, then haven't, you know, understood anything. I mean, these are things over the years that I've heard. Not saying I, what to believe exactly, that doesn't, I don't think I have to believe anything. Thank God knows, and so it doesn't matter, but. Yeah, I think, so whether or not we believe in the innocence of children, or if it's in our DNA, I don't know.
Maybe this is why we need Jesus and God so much.
Well, you know, what comes to my mind is, is like the servant on the mountain, is Matthew 5. How, what a fine line there is between pure thought and sin. It doesn't take much. You, you just have a thought, a lustful thought, or an angry thought, you've sinned, according to those definitions, and that's from the word of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. So, and I think he was telling us something there, is like, the thresholds here are much higher than you could ever hope to achieve. So yes, the message of the Bible is, you absolutely do need Jesus, someone to, on your behalf, to atone for your sin, to pay the price.
Let me be a little heretical here.
You?
Yeah. I have no question about that somehow in our DNA, you know, somehow within us, that we're born in sin. But I question, is that the only thing we're born in? John 1 says, "In him," that is, in the word, in Christ, "was life, and the life was the light of all people." John especially, there's places in the book of John where the presence of Christ seems to be present even before anything happened. That is, were all people, was Christ, or was God present in some way in people from birth? The Celts would say yes. I think John would say yes. So that, yes, we're sinners, but there's also another part there. So we look at people, and I, you know, I, I I remember a person telling me, "You could not go, you cannot go to a counselor who is not a Christian, because they're not a Christian, and you can't get good advice, godly advice from them." That's just crazy to me. That's absolutely crazy.
Because we all know, good be, people who do good.
Yeah, but somehow, that doesn't make them right with God, you know? I don't say that. But is there, and I struggle with that, because that's not part of my, my Lutheran tradition. Not part of it at all. So I do struggle a little with that.
Maybe the Spirit of God makes us aware of our sinfulness. And that's where we have the, kind of the spiritual warfare, in a sense.
Yeah, I think that is the role of the Spirit, in John especially. The Spirit's given to convict the world of sin.
Perhaps the mistake that God made was giving us a free will. I also read a lot of Celtic Christianity material, and if on each day of the creation, God said it was good. He said that after he made people. So Celts believe that all things are created good. But as I said jokingly, perhaps God shouldn't have given us a free will if he wanted us to be pure and like Jesus forever and ever on earth.
I, I like that you brought up the creation. I, I like that you brought up the creation story, Nancy, uh, because what, what Stan says, I don't see heretical at all because we were created in the image of the Creator.
Exactly.
All people. All people.
Correct, correct.
And yet our theologies, I don't, I, I think Helen is the same as Luther in that we are dead in our sin and cannot do anything. There is no life in us apart from Christ. I don't think that I agree with that, but I think Christ's presence is there in some form or another, some way or. So, you know, we're saying that's not heretical, but in our theology, it would be heretical. I think.
It's a good heresy though.
It's a good heresy, yeah.
It's a good heresy, I agree.
I, I'm trying to remember who it was that I quoted. I'm sure I'll remember it later, um, one time in a sermon. And, um, I had a, he was a retired, um, seminary professor came up afterwards and he, you know, kind of passing through and saying hello and he, and he just kind of whispered, he's one of my favorite heretics. And, uh, it was some, um, I think a medieval, uh, person that actually had, 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 uh, was brought up for heresy and then later actually, later that was, uh, quitted, I guess, but so, not entirely, but yeah. I mean, um, I think we can't, we can't escape the stew, if you will, of, of sin.
Yeah.
And so I think when we get into the question, you know, we're born sinful or something like that, it places so much on the individual, like, well, you know, you get in all these philosophical debates, you know, how can a baby, you know, da, 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 well, I mean, but the fact that we die, we're, it's, it's a mark of a sinful world because we weren't meant to. So, so no one can escape that. And it's not, it's not as much a matter of our own, you know, personal guilt and things like that. I mean, that's kind of not the point, I think. But, or, you know, we tend to go in that, in that way. And part of the problem, I think, with that thinking, if you go too far with it, is the idea that, well, maybe, you know, we're sort of, you know, we're kind of good, just sort of good to go once we got, got it figured out, which is, you know, one of the things he brings up about limitation of this. Uh, is that, well, you know, Christ has died for me. I'm, I'm, I'm set free. You know, and then all kinds of terrible things can happen still. It doesn't mean that, you know, you're, you're necessarily right with God in the, in the sense of how you, you know, live in the world and, and, and so on. So it lacks some element, I mean, it's great, but it lacks some element of our own, you know, what's the incentive maybe for us in participating in this um, act of atonement? You know, what's, what's the calling for us? Um, and the calling could be a little more like, hey, you know, to others, which, you know, you need to get right with God. You know, which can sound kind of judgmental.
On the other side, you could say that, okay, uh, sin is in my DNA, so why should I be good? You know? Why should I follow God?
That's for another time.
There is a an idea from the cross that comes with answering.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So the author directs us to Romans three, twenty-three to twenty-six. That's one of the key passages of the Christian faith.
What's the verse?
Twenty-three to twenty-six. I'll cherish that.
Thank you.
Okay.
For all of sin fall short of the glory of God and all are justified freely by his grace through the redemption that came by Christ Jesus. God presented Christ as a sacrifice of atonement through the shedding of his blood to be received by faith. He did this to demonstrate his righteousness because in his forbearance, he had left the sins committed before, beforehand unpunished. He did it to demonstrate his righteousness at the present time so as to be just and the one who justifies those who have faith in Jesus.
So there's a lot in that short bit.
Yeah.
Kind of a summary of what we've been talking about, but then, would you read that again, please?
Sure, uh, twenty-three. For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God and all are justified freely by his grace through the, the redemption that came by Christ Jesus. God presented Christ as a sacrifice of atonement through the shedding of his blood to be received by faith. He did this to demonstrate his righteousness because in his forbearance, he had left the sins committed beforehand unpunished. He did it to demonstrate his righteousness at the present time so as to be just and the one who justifies those who have faith in Jesus.
So the sins beforehand unpunished.
Yeah.
I want you to the, the part that gets me is sounded, sounds like in that verse, that he only justifies those that have faith in Him. And that to me is a real conundrum. So in fact, we don't go to that, but isn't that kind of what he's saying?
Some of me like the work with the cross extends backward in time as well as present to the future.
Yeah.
He justifies those that have faith, yes, that is what he said, by the way, yeah.
And that's a, that's, that's a problem for me. Because I, I think that there are lots of people on spiritual journey who cannot, for whatever reason, culturally, whatever, never occurred even in the name of Jesus. And yet for me, the blood of Jesus extends to everyone who is trying to live rightly and, um, and going towards, um, so yeah, going towards whatever their, their highest good, their highest calling. So.
I wonder whether this book that we hold dear is talking about those who don't have the same thing during the war. I don't know that it, it makes a judgment on someone else.
Now, Jesus is sometimes described as an advocate, isn't he? He is our advocate.
Yes.
If you think of the redemptive work of the cross extending all directions from that point in time, and if you think of Christ's work as also lots of redemptive work, but the work as an advocate, then it seems to me God has been working through Jesus back and forth across time, maybe with those very people. Because God knows our heart, right?
Yeah.
To create the conditions through which people come to a knowledge of God, which is the whole purpose of Jesus in the world anyway. I don't know if that works that way, but that's one way I've tried to put that together in my own people.
Yeah. Thanks, yeah.
Maybe I'm speaking heresy.
As we read on some of the questions that you're asking now and that the, the issues are coming up, they, they, trust me, they will, they will get touched on and addressed in these different in terms of atonement, so.
Verse chapters, whatever. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Questions that we cannot, cannot answer, I don't know. So in our, in our book, um, the author brings in the lion that lives in the wardrobe. And so that's another, it's just a, a connection to that idea of substitutionary atonement, when Aslan sacrifices himself for heaven-seated children, for, is it Edmund? Can you think of other works of art? Visual art, literature, music, so forth? That might depict this idea of substitutionary atonement? Or as Matt was saying, even in some of our hymns? Back on pages twelve to fourteen of ours are, um, the author points out some hymns that which vividly illustrate Jesus's sacrifice. We've got Our Sacred Head now, are you familiar with that one? Which is God be the glory. Are there other hymns that, or worship songs that have helped you more fully understand Jesus's work on the cross for us? Is it in Christ alone? I don't think I have it in my brain.
The Wrath of God was, sounds fun.
Yeah. Oh, Sam, what is your favorite?
What was that?
The Old Ragged Cross.
But somebody responded to that, when they say, did you say something? I, I just, that song, I have, I've always had a hard time, I don't know why, there's always other songs that I've had a hard time with. Maybe, oh, I know why, because it says, um, oh, I love the old cross. And I, so I just really hate that, that image of loving a symbol. Like, so that's, that's my problem with that.
So as Matt was saying earlier, I don't know, I don't think everybody was here. You want to talk about that, that you said about hymns?
Oh, um, yeah, I, what I was saying, or one of the things I was saying earlier was that, um, as we go through this study, uh, I think you'll hear, even in some of the hymns that we're saying today, you get some, especially one or two of the praise songs, I think, it's forty, you'll, you'll get a, you'll, you'll see atonement theory, um, you know, doctrine kind of embedded in the music, you know, in the music that we sing. And, um, yeah, I think the other thing I was just saying is that, you know, as we go through, um, there are, there's, I mean, there's different understandings of atonement and none of them are going to be probably perfect or, you know, I, I'd have to embrace any one, I, but there are elements of, of all of them. Probably a couple that I might lean more toward, um, you know, in a general sense, but, um, you know, we draw upon, we, we draw upon the, the strengths of the different ones. And part of it is that, you know, it's also scriptural. You know, um, right? I mean, you can't talk about uh, the, the cross apart from, say, the blood of the lamb, Passover. I mean, there's some strong correlations, you know, that are there. So that's just, but there's all, again, there's limitations and we have to wrestle with some of these things.
Yeah.
I think I, the way I look at it is I look at the cross as being kind of a diamond. And unlike a diamond that shoots out um, its rays, you know, when the sun is reflected on it, the, the cross does that, shoots out its rays, but each ray is different. Um, they're not always the same picture of what that cross is accomplishing. And the scriptures are very cool. I mean, I don't look at it as a theory because the theory I can disprove. I look at it as an understanding of the scriptures. And the scriptures has the cross um, being seen from a lot of different ways. All of which are true. Not, not one is more true. They're all true, but they all have their limitations. They're they're not complete.
Yeah, I mean, the, the doctrine is, the doctrine is of atonement, but these are different explanations of, or insights into that one doctrine.
Yeah.
The song that came to me was, uh, At the Cross, At the Cross Where First, It's All the Light. So substitutionary atonement can elicit a deep sense of gratitude to God that Jesus did for us, that which we cannot do for ourselves. So in our, in our chapter, in chapter one, there's that story of Captain Coop, oh, Coops. I don't know if you're pronouncing it right. And his sailor, Willie Flatt, remember that? And Coops came to believe in Jesus after reading scripture and substituting his own name into the verses, which made the words more personal and meaningful to him. Have you ever tried that? Have you? And does that change the meaning for you? Lately, I've been trying something while we're singing hymns. Sometimes I substitute the word we or us for I or me.
Yeah.
And it just gives a different meaning. I haven't tried this idea of substituting my name into scripture. Seems presumptive. But for God so loved the world so much, it said, for God so loved Pam so much that he gave his own life so that I, you know, that Pam may have, you know, everlasting life, you know, so that, that's pretty personal when I put it that way, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why do they ring in it now?
At this, I, I know that I have a tendency to just go off on a bird's eye, but when you talk about substituting the, the name um, in there, apparently the Catholic Church didn't allow that in the baptizing. Where was that down in Arizona Diocese or something, that the pastor had, the, the priest had baptized over many years, all these people, and said, we baptized in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. And so they had to go back after many years and tell all of them that the, you, your baptism wasn't valid. Because he used the word we instead of I. And it's like, oh my Lord. Who was in the baptism? Yes, it was, it was God, you know, the baptizing Jesus, you know, I, that's what I thought in baptism, but anyway, that was unfortunate. I feel sorry for those people that have been pained because of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. God really, really
If, that's a problem for them. No. They probably weren't even aware, majority of them.
If that is a problem for God, or God's not big enough.
No. Small bird walks.
Your God is too small, that's, but I was just thinking of that book, Kenny, your God is too small.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, the, the priest stands in. So the I takes on sort of a sacred thing, stands in for, for God, you know, so it's really kind of supporting the role of the priest there. In fact, saying we seem to be a little bit more appropriate, we need to bother some of the spirit. That's why, yeah, so I talk about presumptive, that's my gosh.
I mean, I get why it's an issue. I mean, I understand it.
Because they're understanding of the priesthood, right? Role of the priest.
And our relationship to God.
But to just discount it, oh wait, no.
Yeah. Free will again, honey, it's free will. So the author describes an etching of Rembrandt's The Three Crosses and points out that some believe the artist painted himself among the crowd weeping at the crucifixion. When have you had an emotional reaction to the cross? You've had an emotional reaction to the cross? I have one, I'll share. It wasn't the cross per se, but I was in the Vatican City and, and saw the Pietà, you know, Mary holding Jesus, oh. I think when I saw the movie, Jesus of Nazareth.
I think when I saw the movie, "Jesus at Manazir", that was a long time ago, but again, it's, it's a visual, I think one, the visual is very important in to make it more rich and full and possible, it, you know, it becomes much more flush, flushy as opposed to.
I have another reaction, we visited, Bruce and I visited his brother's church over in Seattle years and years ago on Easter, and they had done, they had done the thing where for the resurrection, they covered the, the cross with flowers. And that was emotional to me. Jesus has risen.
I think several years ago, on a Monday Thursday, the cross that is now hanging with a purple robe on it, in our sanctuary right now, was down and was in the middle of the sanctuary, they moved all the pews out and they, the cross was in there, and then they put chairs like this, and they gave us each a nail and a piece of paper. And quietly, we were supposed to write our sins on it and then just nail. And so all you heard was bang, bang, bang. And then as we left, we left quietly, and the cross was there with all our pieces of paper nailed to the cross, and we left. And then the next time we came back was Easter, with the cross back up, with all the flowers on it, but I, I, I know it's really hard to take all the pews out and all that sort of stuff, but it, it still is a memory to me that that, you know, that was why Christ died, all our sins, and we just were banging our sins into the cross, and like I said, we left with the cross just covered with papers nailed, and that's the last thing we saw until Easter. So that was, that was powerful message to me, I just can always remember that, that was one of my most memorable Monday Thursdays.
There's a church in Squim when I first moved here, and I went to in a row, I don't know if it's Squim Bible Church, but they had the Stations of the Cross. And so you go from room to room, and we did that at the last, but they had some very real estate area there that just hit you, you know, like the Lord, the crown, yeah, but I didn't see it visually, I was looking for it, but some good experience, you just walk through all that silently, and maybe I think you can read, I should go through.
Oh, "Brings it home", yeah, "Brings it home", it's like, whoa. So, to wrap up, do you want to share whether your study this week has grown or enriched your faith?
I think I was very impressed reading this with this, was the character of God that needed to be satisfied, that he, this whole idea of chaos, he brought order out of chaos, and that there's something about his character that cannot look on sin. And that impressed me more this time than in a long time, so. Yeah. The whole necessity then of, of love became more understandable to me.
Any additional thoughts to share on this? That theory, what did you say last time?
Understanding.
Of substitutionary atonement.
I mean, I don't know about anybody, yes, but that whole, that whole story of life from Egypt is just incredibly, you know, the God of the Old Testament was I want to say cruel, but it helped me understanding that his character was good and needed it, but, you know, I mean, for him to allow the destroyer to come in, but wow. It's pretty powerful, but it took great faith on the part of the Jewish people to, you know, sacrifice a lamb, put the blood, I mean, they believed God. You know, okay, whatever you say, God, you know, you're God, and so sometimes, I think I try to change that.
This is sort of curious. For this one, how many, how many you find, you know, more, more, more that you resonate with than, than, you know, than less, so, yeah, to tally up all the pros and the cons, would go more to like, yeah, I can, I resonate with this or, or not? Uh, huh? Go ahead.
No. So, this doesn't resonate, to answer your question, this doesn't resonate a lot with me, except for the notion of brotherhood. I can, I have a hard time, one, understanding that punishment is the only way to keep order in the world. That fundamental, that idea, and I also, the violence of the cross sort of just seems out of character. Right, there's a lot, and I can't put those two things quite together. But gratitude, kind of going for gratitude.
Yeah.
Whatever happened there, it was, thank God.
Yeah, I'm with Wayne, and so when it was said, reflecting on the cross, the last question was, how might you live with greater gratitude for what Jesus did for you? And that's the only one I like to focus on. Yeah.
All right. It seems to me that this understanding of, of the cross fits with the Old Testament understanding of blessing and cursing, curses. So in the Old Testament, you know, if you did right, you were blessed, if you did wrong, you were cursed. And if you did wrong, well, if you were, if bad things happened to you, it's because you did wrong. And Jesus wipes that out, that kind of understanding out. So it doesn't totally fit with me either. It doesn't, it doesn't fit with understanding of grace in a sense.
Well, I think the God of the Old Testament is so different from Jesus and the God of the New Testament, right? So I mean, that's when grace is introduced and.
Well, I think God is the same, but we see him differently, that's all.
Well, we experience him differently because of Jesus. I mean, Jesus basically needed possible, you know, relationship with God. And that's good God.
So next week, we will be on the understanding of the cross as ransom, that Jesus sets us free. So let's go with the word of the Lord. Lord, thank you for this time together today, and it was time to discuss and share our ideas and deepen our knowledge and faith in you. Lord, thank you for doing the work we could not do for ourselves. Help us to live every day in the knowledge of what you've done for us, and allow our love, your love, to sink deep into our hearts. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.